As a district, we cannot solve our budget challenges alone. We do need parents, teachers, LSCs, Community Action Council members, principals, community leaders, and lawmakers to be our partners in finding lasting solutions in Springfield that will allow us to meet our financial challenges while maintaining the critical investments that support our children's learning. I will now introduce CPS Chief Administrative Officer, Tim Colley, for a brief presentation to highlight the adjustments we've made to the fiscal year 14 budget as a result of the feedback we heard from community. Tim?
Thank you, Barbara. President Vitale, members of the board. Today marks the conclusion of a very challenging six-month budget development process. As Barbara mentioned, a month ago, five weeks ago actually, we presented to you and the public the details of our budget for review. And today, we're proposing acceptance of that budget with modest modifications. The release on July 24th reflected a lot of work that had gone on prior to that throughout the -- every department, and a lot of input that we had gotten when we released schools' budget, and I'll comment on that soon. Unquestionably, in the five weeks since then, the public comments have largely reflected a dissatisfaction with our overall funding level. And it's a point of view with which we agree. We believe our current resources make it very, very difficult for us to invest in children the way we want to, and in fact, this year's budget, as you know, requires that we use a significant amount of reserves to maintain a lot of the programs that we have and to make the investments. So we completely agree with the public's outrage about the overall funding level. We're working very hard to increase that on two big fronts that unfortunately are a lot -- mostly out of our control. We have to rely on Springfield, and that is to get pension reform to overcome that $400 million increase that Barbara Bird Bennett referred to, and to get a higher level of per pupil funding for our students from the state. In the absence of real change there, the future is going to be very grim, and we're going to get through this year with what we think is a very sound budget, but we have to make progress on those two areas in Springfield. Just to recap what we've been through here, we actually released the capital budget back on May 1st based on requirements in Senate Bill 630. And so that budget has been reviewed at some length, and we revised it before July 24th based on input that we've gotten. So the capital budget has been thoroughly reviewed now for over four months, almost four months. We released the budgets to the schools on June 5th in a series of meetings, and importantly, those budgets reflected our new student-based budgeting approach, which created much more equity and transparency on how we're funding all of our schools. And after that release, we got a lot of feedback from schools and LSCs, and realized that the amount of funding that had gone, the transitions to student-based budgeting, had created some particularly big challenges at some schools. And so on July 12th, we released additional funds to a number of schools that had been particularly hard-hit, as well as releasing some SGSa funds that typically would not have been available to schools until October or November. There continued to be meetings after that with getting more input, so that our budget on July 24th actually reflected a lot of feedback that we had gotten from the community, even before the full budget was presented. Following that presentation on the 24th, we did hear two public hearings, but that was just part of our feedback, and I'll show you that in the next slide. And we've shared a few revisions that we've made to that budget with you and the details of our budget over the weeks since that last presentation. So we're here today for the approval of our budget. As I said, over the last month, we have gotten feedback beyond those two public -- or the three public hearings that were held on those two days at the beginning of August. We met with the City Council Education Committee on August 9th and went through the details of our budget for them, and we've had one-on-one briefings with aldermen and legislators, so they could understand and that we could get their feedback. We've had our budget posted on a website, and we've gotten comments there, although admittedly, the public is not as used to providing feedback there, and there are only a smattering of comments there. We hope to see much more engagement online in the future. We've been meeting with community groups and a coalition of LSCs that have been particularly concerned with the funding for their schools, and we've walked them through the details of their budgets and provided resources to help those schools actually make the most of the funding that they have. And then the Civic Federation, a highly respected organization that's very neutral, was briefed on our budget and has issued a report, providing us feedback on what they thought was good and bad about what we had done. Just of though that feedback, it starts with this first point. Everybody's feeling the pressure of reduced resources this year. The departments here at Central Office, the schools where we ultimately had to make a reduction in overall funding, and in some of the specific areas, there was a specific concern about bilingual support in some of our schools, and that reflected a reduction in state funding. Everybody that we talked to wants to help us find a way to get more funding for CPS, and that's great, because on that, we are all aligned. So we'll be working very closely with community organizations, with aldermen, with other legislators who want to help us be successful in getting reform for our pensions to lower that enormous expense that we've got, and to generate more revenue for us with higher state funding. The Civic Federation had some very specific feedback, which we take seriously. One is that they feel we need a sustainable long-term plan, and we couldn't agree more. Any organization needs to know kind of where it's going over several years. The thing that makes that so hard is it's completely dependent on the point above that. It's completely -- it's hard to imagine what a long-term plan would look like without pension reform, without additional revenues, and so the efforts on those fronts are critical to having a plan that's anything short of -- that's reasonable and not devastating to our schools. They also thought that this use of reserves that we've embraced, last year we did this and again this year, as a means of lessening the pain in our schools, is not a practice that can continue, and Dr. Bynan's been very clear about this in the past, that this is not a sustainable way to operate the budget. And we agree, because the reserves are going to run out after this year, but the alternative to using the reserves is to inflict what we think would be devastating pain on our schools. And then finally, the Civic Federation thought we needed to provide more public review time before the actual hearings. It was about a week between, a little over a week, between when we released the budget and when the public hearings were scheduled. We think that's fair feedback, and we'll look to provide more time on that in the future. So we are here to present a budget, and there's an awful lot of complexity in our budget, but as a summary of what we presented to you five weeks ago, the budget calls for almost $5.6 billion in appropriations or expenses that we need in our schools and in all of our departments. That's more than we have to spend. We have revenues of just under $5 billion, and so as you can see in the middle column, that red number, we are drawing on reserves of almost $643 million. And in fact, our use of one-time funds is even higher than that, because as you see in the bottom, it's almost $700 million, because when we tap into our debt service fund balance, it actually doesn't close that deficit gap, it creates more revenue for us. So that's another one-time item that we're using to, again, reduce the pain in schools. And for us, the choice was simple, because even with the reductions that were made in school resources, it was very, very painful. We can't imagine having to have cut even deeper than what we did. So we put together a budget based on a lot of work that stretches us very, very thin, but we felt it was the right thing to do and provided the resources for us to invest in critical priorities of the district. And if I could just recap some of the key themes from the presentation five weeks ago, we are cutting a lot of expenses in administration and operations. In fact, over $700 million over the last three years in areas away from the classrooms. We've taken property taxes to the cap in each of the last three years, which allows us to have the increase in property tax revenue here. We have managed our debt rather creatively to lower our debt costs in every given year and to defer some of our debt service payments to the future. And ultimately, even with all of those actions, we still had to make a reduction in schools. So we have done so many things and still don't have the resources to avoid the use of one-time funds or to make a reduction at schools. This slide you saw in the meeting on the 24th shows how much we're using in one-time resources, and probably the most critical box on here is in the top right that shows on unrestricted reserves, we'll have nothing at the end of this year after using almost $563 million. And that's not surprising, because not only did we use all of that, but we went into our restricted reserves on the TORT fund balance and on the debt service reserve. So we have stretched ourselves in ways that we haven't done before to try and make a budget that could work for our students this year. So in the absence of pension reform and more revenue, we're not going to have hundreds of millions of dollars to rely on in the future. There were two small changes we've made to the budget since we presented it to you, and I want to be sure to highlight those for you. On our nutrition budget, in our nutrition support services, or basically the food services budget, we had anticipated a reduction in staffing, and I mentioned this in the July 24th meeting. We had offered a voluntary retirement buyout to some of our workers, because we had done an analysis that proved we didn't need as many food service workers as we had. And we knew that we could be more efficient and therefore had to reduce costs in those areas. Fewer of our staff took that buyout, and so what you'll see in this budget is an additional 200 food service employees, and so that staffing line is bigger than it had been. It actually doesn't affect the total food service budget, because we had created a reserve for that buyout package. So the fact that fewer took the buyout meant we had fewer packages we had to give, but we have higher employment costs. And we'll look to continue to streamline this organization through attrition going forward. So that's the first change that is in this and merits your attention. Here's the nutrition budget. As you can see, the staffing line is $5.9 million higher, reflecting the extra 200 people, and the contingency that we had had for the buyout is reduced by the same amount. The second area that we changed was in the English language learners. I mentioned that we got feedback that the bilingual support had taken a hit because of state funding, and we knew that some schools with a lot of English language learners were feeling stretched frankly by the amount of resources that they had. Now, this is an area that actually, the amount of state funding isn't determined until the middle of the year, so we had actually been maybe a little too conservative in holding back funds from schools, because we were worried that the state was going to reduce our funding again. As we looked at this and listened to communities, we decided to release $2 million of that reserve. We'll take a chance that we'll drive for the state funding. We still have some reserve in there for variation there, but we felt that we had to get more money out to schools. So based on the number of English language learners in schools, they'll receive an additional $44 per pupil, and almost 400 of our schools will benefit from that. So in conclusion, this has been a very challenging process, and I want to salute Ginger Ostrow and her team for their hard work on this. As I said five weeks ago, the idea that we could have developed a budget that was reasonable and swallow a $400 million increase in our pension was inconceivable, and yet we found a way to do it. It's not a way that we're going to be able to do every year, but this year, we found a way to do it. So we propose approval of the budget, and we ask for your support as we drive for more efficiency throughout the organization, reform in Springfield, more education funding. And ultimately, our future lies in their hands in very many ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Board member questions? Henry?
Well, I congratulate Tim and Ginger and their colleagues on presenting a sensible budget under these very difficult circumstances. I know Mr. Mousal is going to speak later in the open session, but I did want to say a word about the criticisms of the Civic Federation. I think Tim is quite right in saying it's hard to conceive of a plan, or at least the variables of pension reform and more funding from Springfield would loom very large, but we haven't had those yet. Whether we get them or not, I don't have a crystal ball. So I do think there's something to be said for long-range thinking, and I believe Tim and his colleagues are doing it, of what it looks like without those changes. Now, with regard to pension reform, it's a kind of euphemism, because pension reform means a change that comes out of somebody's hide, whether it's going to be taxpayers or unions or whatever. So I think sooner or later, one has to face what this means, and it has to be faced in discussions with our colleagues in CTU. But there's clearly one place where we could be very aligned with the CTU, and that is with discussion with people in Springfield about the need for higher per pupil funding in the district here from the state, because as everybody knows, the state is way down on the bottom, if it's not at the very bottom, in what it provides this district with funding. So there, there's a difficult conversation and an easy conversation. Having said that, I see no advantage, and here I agree completely, with the Civic Federation in thinking about pension holidays. It got us into trouble in the past. It's not a solution for the future. I'm not in favor of it, and I hope this board won't be in favor of it going forward. It just, as the mayor said once, you can't kick the can down the road anymore, because there's no more road. Having said that, I do have a couple of questions if I can, Mr. President, for Mr. Colley. There's been sort of criticism, or not sort of, of the anticipated spending for the CPS in a couple of areas maybe you could just speak to, Tim. One is what we're doing in new school development, which has got a fairly sizable price tag, and the other is the talent office. If you could flesh out a little bit how you've understood those rather large expenditures, whether they're changes, increase, what the dollars are for?
Great. What I'd like to do is make a comment, and then have Ginger Ostrow come up, who's our budget director, who knows the budget better than anybody in the district, maybe in the world. We appreciate that there are organizations and individuals who have dived deep into our budget, and we've welcomed it actually. We've provided a lot more transparency and clarity online, line by line, with staffing by department, to invite that kind of scrutiny. The budget is actually very complex, as you know from our presentations with you. There's an awful lot of detail in there, and unfortunately, sometimes people don't know what the apples-to-apples comparisons are. So Ginger will be able to address some of those, the two that you specifically raised, but I think it's important to know that we're happy to talk to anybody about the details of our budget, and we invite this kind of scrutiny, because sometimes people draw the wrong conclusions, and that's unfortunate, and we just have to work together to help them understand it. So Ginger, if you could come up and specifically address the funding for new schools and talent, which were the two areas that you've talked about, and I think she'll help you see that the comparisons that have been brought up in some of that criticism are just not accurate. Come on up. This is Ginger Ostrow, our budget director, who's been here for two and a half years.
Great. Thank you very much. First is to address the increase in the budget for new school development. This is part of the Office of Innovation and Incubation, and if you look online at that department budget, it looks like it's facing a $21 million increase. But in fact, if you understand a little bit about how the dynamic works, you'll see the increase is not that substantial. What we do is we budget at the beginning of each year for the costs of equipment and furniture and computers for new schools that are starting during the course of the year or expanding. That includes district schools and charter schools. However, that money actually gets spent at the school. So during the course of the year, we will move that money from the innovation incubation budget out to the school, and that's where you'll actually see it spent. And so if you're doing a comparison and looking at the amount the department spent last year compared to what we've budgeted this year, it looks like a $22 million increase, when in fact, if you look at where we actually spent the money last year, $12 million was spent in the schools. So it was originally in that budget and then spent in the schools. And so what we have is about $12.5 million actually. So the increase that's in that budget then accounts for the cost of new schools and expanding schools. Again, these are district schools and charter schools that we would pay for furniture, equipment, computers, et cetera. So you really have to do an apples-to-apples comparison to look at where the spending was, not just necessarily looking at the department. So that explains the change in that particular budget. The talent budget did have an increase this year, which was substantially due to some of the costs of the school consolidations. And as part of the contractual agreement, and Alicia had mentioned this earlier, there are staff that did follow their students to the welcoming schools, and then there are also staff that did not, and we set aside money in the talent budget to cover the contractual costs for those staff, and that's what's included there, and that's what you see as the increase in that budget.
Thank you. And in fact, I'd add just two comments to that. On the new schools, some of the new schools that benefited in that budget line, the new Back-of-the-Arts High School, the expansion of Disney 2 and Jones College Prep, so district schools, as they get bigger or open brand-new schools, there are real costs there. On the talent organization, I will also add that I know for a fact that the talent budget and staffing, kind of the administrative side of the talent budget, is less than last year, because they have reduced in size the central headcount.
So, Tim, just to make it clear, the increase in the talent budget in sort of more corporate terms, basically severance money for teachers that will not find new jobs?
Yes, that's exactly right. To help them with the transition if they didn't find a job.
Ginger may need to come back up, but--
Sure, she will.
Because sometimes these snapshots in time don't do, as Ginger mentioned, they'll give the entire picture. Over the course of the last two and a half years, how much expense has been taken out of central office administration, so that where there may be, you know, increases from the year? Overall, what's the picture in terms of how much cost has been taken out of this building in particular?
It's a tough one to -- so the central office itself, my guess is maybe $20 or $30 million has come out of central office itself, but we think of it differently, Jesse. There are a lot of central expenses that are also out in the field, in network offices, in operations, things that don't benefit classrooms. I mean, they still affect people, but we have reduced in our building maintenance costs, we have reduced many of our contracts with suppliers. That's driven out of the central office, so we think of that as central and administrative and operations savings. And if you put all of those initiatives together, we're at $700 million over two and a half years. I mean, very meaningful changes in how we operate as an organization. But if you think of the total cost of this facility and all the people who are in here, it's actually much less than that in total. It's under $200 million. So the fact that we've made meaningful progress in reducing the costs here in how we operate this building and the number of people here, it's been about 500 people down in about five years here, that's real reduction in administration, but our true savings initiatives go much further. And I will add, we are very close to getting ready to think about how we can save even more money here in facility and occupation fees.
Could you also comment on, there's been some discussion, critique, in terms of funding of charter schools versus our traditional CPS schools, and what might seem like an increase, and is it indeed an increase that we're funding charter schools at a higher per pupil level than, for example, an average neighborhood school?
One of the great benefits of student-based budgeting is it puts this debate to rest in many, many ways, because charter schools and district schools receive the exact same amount of instructional funding based on the student-based budgeting formula. And that has done a lot to demystify the funding. So when you see an increase on the charter line and the budget online, that reflects more students in charters, the growth of existing schools as they add a grade or increase their enrollment, or the new schools that had been authorized by the board, those students have arrived and they've gotten their fair share of the funding based on student-based budgeting. So it's a complete variable expense, and if the enrollment doesn't show up, we'll do the exact same assessment at those schools at the end of next week. If the kids aren't there, we take the money away. And if they have more kids than what was originally projected, they'll get additional funds, but the money follows the students, which is one of the great hallmarks of student-based budgeting.
My final point was on the ELL students, and I'm trying to understand, and I don't know if I'm right or wrong, my understanding is some of that funding is provided, we provide the services, so we have to have in the schools a certified ELL teacher. We'll get additional funding from the state. If we don't have, and that's in our control and the principals' control, the certified ELL teachers, then we're not going to get the money. So some additional funding can be, Elizabeth, and I'll even look at you and see if I'm right on this, it's frankly on our control that we've got to get those certified, and if our principals aren't doing that, we need to do something about it.
Absolutely, and I think--
Looking at everybody in this room, that we need to do something about it to make sure those students are getting those services, those principals are hiring those folks who have the certification.
And Barbara's emphasis on this area is what gave us confidence, excuse me, gave us confidence in releasing that $2 million to schools, because there's a great deal of emphasis, and Elizabeth is driving it, and we're confident we will make this a high priority, because it's the right thing to do and because it helps secure that funding from the state.
Exactly. So we've got to find those certified, you know, when I look at Jackson and Jackson over there, they may help us find those certified, because they can bring additional funds and, more importantly, provide those services to those students who truly need it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Tim, just looking at the accountability budget, if you guys can maybe, Ginger may need to come back up again as well. Obviously, Dr. Bird Bennett has made really important announcements around, you know, the dramatic reduction in our testing schedule, which I think is great for teachers and schools and students, et cetera. That said, the budget appears to be flat, and so maybe you guys could talk to that. The second question is, as I was out this summer talking and meeting with, you know, numerous principals, obviously, the pain of the budget crunch was palpable, but in addition to that, the timing, the very late timing sort of exacerbated what was already a bad situation. So I just thought maybe if you all would also speak to kind of in a forward way what we hope to have happen next year in the planning cycle, so that, you know, school leaders don't get crunched on both ends as it relates to timing and planning and community management as well, and, you know, interaction with the community on the budgets.
Let me address the second question first, and then I'll have Ginger come up and talk about the accountability budget. On timing, we couldn't agree more that the compressed timetable is very demanding for our principals and their staffs as they try to work with the budget and decide who should be there. It's tough on our departments, and it's frankly, just from a governance standpoint, I think for the board to be approving a budget two months into a new fiscal year is crazy. In each of the last two years, we've been pushed out, in fact, the last three years, we've been pushed out for extraordinary events. New administration, new leadership team here came in two years ago. Last year, there were contract negotiations with seven unions, so we didn't know what the expenses would be for thousands, tens of thousands of our employees. And this year, the school actions decisions being delayed until the end of May, it was difficult for us to know how to structure budgets for schools when we didn't know how many schools we would have. So each of the last three years has had extraordinary circumstances. That has got to stop. So we hope to settle down, and as Barbara Bird Bennett often says, it's time to focus now on educating kids and get on with things and not have extraordinary circumstances. We need to get to a cycle where we are approving the budget in late June, releasing it to schools in late March or early April, 1st of April, so that they have sufficient time to work with it. The board and the community has plenty of time to look at and provide feedback, but to target an approval in the end-of-June board meeting before the start of the next fiscal year. That is our goal, and we are committed to achieve that. Ginger, do you want to address the accountability budget?
Thank you. I think we have to look at the accountability budget in two parts. There's a part that covers the assessment, and then the central, and then the staffing as well. If you break it apart and look just at the assessment piece of it, the budget was about $14.5 million last year, but only about $11 million was spent. In FY14, the budget for assessments is just over $10 million. So you see a decrease on the assessment side from what we budgeted last year and what we spent last year. So that's one piece of the budget that actually did go down as we would anticipate because of the changes. The second part of the budget relates specifically to the staffing. And here, to do an apples-to-apples comparison, you have to look at where some of the functions were in the FY13 budget versus how they're budgeted in FY14. And a number of different areas were moved into the Office of Accountability in FY14 that accounts for what looks like an increase in spending, but is actually staff moving from the IT Department and the Department of Knowledge Management. So that spending was elsewhere in the district and just moved into the Office of Accountability for fiscal 14. So if you actually did an apples-to-apples comparison, that budget would be down. So if you actually did an apples-to-apples comparison, that budget would be down if you accounted for those moves into the budget as well as the assessment. A little bit hard to unpack, but you can trace through that and see those changes.
In fact, I will underscore that last point on how the budget can change when a department reports differently. So engineers used to be part of school budgets, and we decided last year to bring that into central management in our facilities team, an initiative that saved us tens of millions of dollars, and we believe, long-term, will improve the maintenance of our facilities. So that change makes all the sense in the world, but if you look at our central budget, it looks like my team has this huge increase in expense, because the engineers now are on my team directly instead of on school teams. So if somebody's not really paying attention to the things that we're doing, they could draw the entirely wrong conclusion about how we're managing the budget.
I would just say to you, Tim, I understand all of that, and maybe we need to do a better job in the future of explaining it when we go out to the public with it, so that we don't create that confusion. I mean, we clearly, you clearly know the answers to these questions. We ought to find a better way to present that kind of change, so that people don't have to, we don't have to have these kinds of conversations.
Is it possible to annotate it when you do it online? I don't know if technologically we're able to provide that kind, I mean, it's a pain in the butt, I know what I'm asking, but have some footnotes to these things that may look like it's an increase or something, but you've got to point folks to the prior year data or differences and changes of how things are being accounted for, so that they know.
Very good suggestions. I think we will need to find ways to do that. It's hard to explain every change in the budget, but maybe when there's a material change in the structure of departments, we need to point that out. So very good suggestion.
I've got a couple ideas for you, if you want to talk about it.
I had a couple of questions I would like to ask Tim. So based on a per-pupil budget allocation, and the fact that schools will decide what to do with that money, when we take a look at district-run schools and charter schools, then we can say that charter schools have also lost teacher positions, based on their allocation. So that happens across the board, to every school. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. And in fact, in both cases, high schools took a particular hit. So I think if you talk to charter high schools, just like district high schools, you'll find that they felt real pain this year in the way that they were funded. In both cases, district and charter, elementaries tended to fare better than high schools, because student-based budgeting adjusted the weighting for those schools.
My second question has to do, you know, as a principal, the beginning of the school year, there are budget adjustments based on demographics. How is that going to be handled this year? Because I remember the 20th day and how we were making sure that every student was accounted for, so that we would receive the money. How is that going to be handled this year?
So one point of clarification, on the past, on the 20th day, and the 20th day is an important day, because per our contract, that is the last day that we can make reductions at a school that doesn't have as many students. So it's a very important day, and in the past, we would just notify schools on the 20th day, you don't have the kids, we're closing this position. We would decide centrally which position would be closed. We've changed that this year, again, thanks to student-based budgeting, and we'll now be looking at enrollment on the 10th day, and we'll be advising principals of the change in their funding based on that 10th-day enrollment. If they have more kids, they're going to get more money. If they have fewer kids, we're going to take money away. And the reason to move it up to the 10th day is to let the principal decide how that changes the structure at the school. Instead of us saying, this person needs to go away, the principal will look at his or her staff and say, okay, I have less money now, I need to think about what's the best way to optimize the funds I do have. And so we've provided the time between the 10th day and the 20th day for that interaction with the principal and his or her chief, and with our education department here centrally. So that'll be a more collaborative and thoughtful decision than it used to be in the past. So that's change number one. 10th-day enrollment will decide funding, not 20th-day. The second thing I'll say is, the best thing about, again, with student-based budgeting is, the change will be precise to the student. So in the past, an example might be a school that, I don't know what exactly the thresholds would be, but a school with, projected to have 395 children, might just have two or three more children, and all of a sudden, they'd get an extra position, an entirely new teacher, because they're now, they now have 398 or 400 students. So they'd get another whole teacher for those extra kids. Similarly, if you dropped two or three kids, you might lose an entire teaching position based on our quota formula and the way that it was calculated. With student-based budgeting, three more students means the money for three more students. Three less students means the money for three less students, and you don't have these crazy cliffs that we used to have that distorted the way schools were funded. So we are confident that the new approach and that we're communicating with principals what they can expect, we're confident that they can make the most thoughtful decisions for their schools. Some will be dancing in the streets, because they're going to get a bunch more money, because more students showed up than they had thought were going to come, and some will be unhappy because they'll be losing money. The last thing I'll say is, the alternative to that is schools are not funded appropriately, right? You would be leaving money in schools that don't have the students to support that funding, and by doing that, you're taking it away from the students that are somewhere else in the district. So the money following the students is the principle that we think makes the most sense.
Hopefully, there'll be more gains than reductions, because we've had reductions already, and we'll see.
Tim, I want to go back to something that I think was, you said in the first question, or answer to the first question about the Office of Innovation and Incubation, and noting that that money is moved, is going to go to new and expanding schools. I think we just need to take a minute to talk about how we have new schools and what that means, and how we have money in the budget for new schools at a time in which we just closed 50 schools, because we are underutilized, and just talk about what that means, why that money's there, and how it would be deployed.
Well, certainly, the decision to have new schools is a broad strategic decision for the district. In many cases, it's expanding selective enrollment choices, like we've done at Jones High School. In some cases, it's going into a community like Back of the Yards and building a brand-new school with a lot of TIF funds, actually. Both of them were built with TIF funds. A brand-new school that will attract children that have been in facilities that frankly, we're not very proud of, that are in that area, that are old high schools that are rundown and don't have state-of-the-art facilities. In others, we've expanded alternatives in a magnet school, like a Disney Two, that attracts kids from all over the city, and is now expanding to add high school grades. And so as we expand those kinds of schools, you need to provide, Disney Two didn't have high school furniture, so they need furniture and other equipment to, teacher furniture and whatnot, to allow them to grow. So some of it is district schools that are growing like that. Some of it is charter schools that have been added in areas throughout the city, alternative schools, you know, we've done a significant expansion there. We've expanded pre-K, so you have to provide pre-K facilities, and charter schools, where a school is adding grades, they need the furniture and the materials to be able to serve those students. So it's part of the decision we've made as a district to provide choices for parents. It's part of a decision we made as a district to invest in some of our winning formulas and expand them, but to do so requires money. I will say, we are being much more stingy in those situations. Now, if you walk through Jones, you're going to see a lot of great furniture, but as schools have expanded and added grades, we have harvested good-quality furniture and materials and technology from other schools around the district, and it hasn't been kind of a blank check to just make a school filled with all shiny new stuff. We just can't afford to do that anymore. So we're being much more thoughtful about pulling out stuff that can be reused in many of these schools.
And I also think, I heard this in your answer, but you didn't highlight it, but I just want to make sure I understood it, that we're being much more targeted as well, right? So we have various specific purposes. So Back of the Yards, Jones, the RFQ for new schools went out for specifically for areas in which we have overutilization, where we have overcrowded schools. So as opposed to a broad base, put your new school wherever you want.
Right. Yeah, and that's part of the, going forward, the charters have been specifically asked to go into areas where we need capacity, and as we've heard here in board meetings, we have a number of neighborhoods where our schools are quite overcrowded, and we have to find solutions to that. And so adding new schools in those areas makes total sense.
Tim, are we now specifying they've got to bring their own facility? We're not providing facilities for folks in this.
That's correct. Right. In the new RFP, they have to bring their own facility to help us expand capacity in areas that are overcrowded.
So, Tim, there's been an accusation out there that we've not invested in our children who have special needs in this budget, and that in fact, we've cut back. I've been through it. I don't know where that comes from. Can you confirm my understanding, that we have not cut back?
Yeah, I think Ginger will have the details, again, off the top of her head. I will make it a high-level statement that, two things. One, we have not cut back spending in that area. In fact, our diverse learners organization has a total budget of over $800 million, and it is up, I think, a little bit year over year, so we're not cutting back in that area. And number two, student-based budgeting actually addressed some, what we thought were shortcomings in our past funding approach, to increase funding for children's with diverse needs. So Ginger, do you want to do the specific numbers on that? I think there are several hundred students that had not been receiving funding in the past. Come on up.
So just to clarify, there's two parts of how we fund students with diverse learning needs. There are the specific services provided based on the student's IEP, and obviously, those are student-specific, they're minute-specific, and they are fully funded in the budget, so there's no impact there. What did change as part of student-based budgeting was how we fund students with diverse learning needs as part of our general education budget. So this is the core funding that they would receive. Under the quota formula, there were, as Tim mentioned, whole categories of students that weren't counted as part of the general education population, and so received no funding. In fact, it's about 850 students that just weren't counted. They weren't included because of the amount of time that they received special education services. As part of student-based budgeting, we've changed that, and so now every student is counted, and every student is counted as they were under the quota formula, or for these 850 students, they're actually counted as full students. So for most students, they're getting, most students with diverse learning needs are receiving the same funding for general education as all students are. So it's just, it's actually increasing the funding that's available to them relative to what was under the quota formula.
And everything we did on the funding for students with diverse learning needs was done in lockstep with Dr. Marke Winston, who leads that organization and is a strong advocate to make sure that she's got the resources necessary. So the formulas that we used captured those students who were overlooked in the past in the gen ed pool. But remember, just to be clear, they were still receiving a lot of diverse learning supports, but now they, for the part of the day they're in a homeroom, or for the funding that that school needs, because they're in the building, that school is now getting funding for those students.
Any other questions for Tim?
No.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right, Tim, thank you very much, and Ginger as well, for supporting him.